All right, good evening everybody and welcome to the Wednesday, I say Wednesday, November 7th, meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
President.
Trustee Luise.
President.
Trustee Andino.
President.
Trustee Lang.
President.
Mayor Eklund.
I am happy to be here tonight. I do not have any appointments to make this evening. I do however, have one presentation to make. Each year we take the proceeds from the Tuckahoe Challenge Road Race and we donate these proceeds to local groups that benefit our community in Tuckahoe. So this year the race was very successful and on Monday night, Trustee Andino presented a check, thank you very much, to the Friends of the Library for $3,500. So tonight, I am very happy to be presenting a check for $3,500 also. This one's going to the Tuckahoe Beautification Association. So tonight, we have representatives here, we have Susan Chimara and Sheila Clark. So, I've got a check for you folks. Would you like to come up and get it? And maybe tell us a little bit about the Tuckahoe Beautification, what some of your funds go towards and so forth. Thank you. And thank you for all the work that you do too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please do.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Beautification Association would like to thank the village board for considering Tuckahoe Beautification Association as one of the recipients of the proceeds from the road race. These funds will certainly help our budget. I would just also like to mention that with regard to the newly constructed park at Columbus and Lincoln Avenues, personal engraved pavers may be ordered through the Tuckahoe Beautification Association by calling 914-772-786. Applications outlining details and contact information will be mailed to residents. Some will be hand-delivered, as well as businesses. We will also enclose a photo of the park to go along with the application. So, we hope that the residents will support this fundraising event for the Tuckahoe Beautification Association. Thank you.
It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful park and thank you for coming up with the name Station Park. We really like that.
That was Loretta Sorincion after she came up with the Station Park name and I think it's very fitting for the area.
Good. And I ordered two bricks, I hope you got that. I sent it in already, ordered for two bricks, so I placed that.
Yes, I purchased two pavers and Trustee Lang also.
Excellent, beautiful.
Thank you so much.
Oh, we're real happy to support the association.
And hopefully down the road, I'm gonna try to work with David to get this information on the village's website as one of the links.
It's already up there. All right. Thank you. We have no public hearings tonight, so that's gonna bring us to the adoption of minutes. The approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of October 15th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And that's gonna bring us to the first opportunity to address the board on anything that's on our agenda tonight. If anybody would like to speak on something on our agenda. Yes. If you just tell us your name and address, please.
Good evening Mayor and trustees. I'm Melba Caliano, I live on Westview. I see in your agenda that you are hoping to declare yourself lead agency tonight for the Marble Dale Road Design Guidelines. I would like to point out that the guidelines were not available for anyone to review until about midnight last night. Reminded me of what happened with the Republicans dumping on the Democrats for the Kavanaugh hearings, 40,000 pages the night before when there was no time to review them. Luckily, you only have 45 pages. I did review them. Fairly in-depth, but not completely in-depth. I don't wanna go into all the comments I do have about them because as I understand it, you're gonna declare yourself lead agency and you're not taking comments, you're gonna refer it to the planning board to take comments. However, I notice in your agenda item that you talk about referring it to the planning board for public comment, public hearing, and it appears that you want it back to your board by January 7, 2019.
I'll tell you what we'll do, I'm gonna ask our village attorney just to clarify what the procedure is.
Sure. So Melba, in our code, the planning board, when there's amendments to the comprehensive plan or stuff like that, they refer it over to the village board. So that's what the village board's doing now, sending it to the planning board to look at it, to make comments, to send it back here. There'll be a public hearing back here also, that you can make comments on, so, on that, those amendments.
Okay, so the language that says, "Consider adopting the guidelines as an amendment to the comprehensive plan for January 7, 2019," in item 3 of your agenda, doesn't...
Setting the public hearing.
When is the public hearing? After January 7 or, or is it on January 7?
On January 7th, meeting of January 7th.
Okay. Has any of you taken a look at your website for the agenda and meeting times for the planning board? Because I have. Your planning board has canceled the November meeting. So the November meeting will not be available for the planning board to open a public hearing to take public comments from the constituents.
They're not gonna take, there's no public hearing at the planning board. There'll be a public hearing here.
Regardless, your, 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 your language says, "For report and recommendation in setting a public hearing to consider adopting the guidelines as an amendment to the comprehensive plan for January 7." You're telling me the planning board is not gonna open a public hearing and solicit comment?
The Board of Trustees.
Correct. Our code doesn't require that, so it's gonna come back here. It's the planning board to make a referral to the village board and then they'll have their public hearing on January 7. Now if the planning board obviously needs more time to review or they're not prepared to send it over to the village board, then that public hearing would have to also be extended.
We'll grant that extension.
That's a great explanation. Why isn't that in the agenda, so that people understand that?
Because we don't know if that's gonna occur yet.
So that people understand that the process is that the planning board isn't gonna have a public hearing. You only want them to do recommendations.
Melba, if I may, I mean, that is why it was on the agenda tonight.
My name is Ms. Caliano.
Ms. Caliano, apologies. That's why it was on the agenda tonight, to have that explanation. Now, appreciate that you took the time to review it quickly and have comments for it, but that's what we were going to discuss when we got to the agenda item, explain exactly that process. So, appreciate it, but that was what we were going to do, you kinda preempted us.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, because I was looking at the timing, as you might suspect, and the timing, under my understanding, was woefully deficient.
Right. And you were misunderstood it, but that's, that's okay.
Well, the other thing I wanna point out is that, these are guidelines, unless any member of our constituency be under the impression that there is any enforceability to these guidelines, when and if you do pass them, that needs to be made clear that this is discretionary. These are not laws, these are not rules, these are not statutes. Guidelines are suggestions. They're only suggestions. So you're putting out a bunch of suggestions that frankly, are pretty good and they reflect a lot of common sense, which kinda begs the question, why you need them anyway? Because we've gone all these years in Tuckahoe without any design guidelines and suddenly we feel the need to do guidelines for Marble Dale Road, in a somewhat speedy way. I mean, January 7, 2019 is pretty speedy. So it is a good idea that you have guidelines. But I do wanna make it clear that no one can enforce the guidelines, not you, not the planning board, not the zoning board, it's just a bunch of suggestions. I would like to ask how much this draft proposal cost the village to prepare?
That was on an earlier agenda, I think it was $12,000, I think we permissioned.
$12,000, okay. Again, I mentioned common sense and suggestions that have no legal enforceability. I also noticed that it's drafted by Buckhurst Fish and Jacques Mar, otherwise known as BFJ Planning. That's Frank Fish's company. Frank Fish's name is on that document, so is Noah Levine's. He's worked as a consultant with the planning board for several years now. Mayor, I thought you told Joe Marinello after your reelection in March 2017 that you got rid of Frank Fish. You told Joe Marinello you were responding to his complaint about Frank Fish. I see Frank Fish's name on the document. I see Frank Fish's associate, Noah Levine, forever, at least for as long as I was on the planning board the last two to three years. Noah Levine was Frank Fish's employee. So I question whether you in fact, switched Frank Fish for any other planning company. It doesn't look like you have. I do wanna point out something. On your page 21, I know that you're not taking comments. I'd like clarification at this point, 'cause I think it's important. You talk about the environmental zoning bonus. The environmental zoning bonus allows a developer or an applicant to have an increase in height to approximately 60 feet if they do environmental amenities, like bio swales, roof gardens, rain gardens, et cetera. Basically, an ecologically compliant type of building. That's been a bonus in this village board zoning code for a long time, since about 2008, when it was last, when the Marble Dale Road was rezoned. My concern with that is, the current statute indicates your, your height limit is 50 feet. I know that you're gonna reduce it to 45 feet, so you're gonna knock off five feet, but you're gonna allow 60 feet on top of that 45. So that's my question. Are we simply going between 45, and this is necessarily directed to Mr. Gertson?
If I, if I may, as you know Melba, this, this document will be referred to the planning board for report and recommendation. It'll then go to the Board of Trustees for a public hearing that may last, you know, a couple of meetings, it's up to the board to take those comments. The addendum on here, obviously, as you said, it doesn't become law, doesn't become statute until afterwards, if the Board of Trustees wants to take these guidelines, change the zoning code. At that point, obviously, a public hearing needs to be set and zoning needs to be drafted. Again, these are just recommendations. This board may want the environmental bonus, they may not want the environmental bonus, the planning board members of the public may have different things to say about that. So obviously, this is still a draft form.
Yes, I know it's draft, and I didn't see any notice posted anywhere but on the village website that this even existed and it wasn't posted until midnight last night. And I might be one of the three people in all of Tuckahoe that read these things and are sticklers for detail.
Let me ask, was it posted before midnight last night?
Of course, before midnight, of course.
Yeah.
I posted it yesterday. Again, you have to recall, this is going to the planning board and then public comment will be taken from the Board of Trustees. So, any member of the public has two months prior to that January public hearing to read it over, ask questions about it.
Right.
They can call me, they can call Gary.
I understand that, Mr. Burke, I appreciate you repeating yourself, thank you. What I'd like to point out is we no longer have local newspapers like we had the Daily Voice, like we had any... Mr. Burke, please let me, please let me finish, Mr. Burke.
A notice will go into the newspaper as per...
Mr. Burke, please let me finish. Where else was this going to be posted to give notice to the public, to make comment?
The village newspaper.
When the public hearing is set officially by the Board of Trustees, a notice will go into the official newspaper and it will be placed on the village website.
Okay, and we're going into holiday season and people are gonna be reading those newspapers from cover to cover and referring to the website for everything.
Mel, Ms. Caliano, are we gonna continue to look for a smoking gun over something as simple as this?
It's not simple, Mr. Luise. It's never simple, the detail, the devil is in the details. And I'm looking at your zoning proposed, zoning changes, and they're not simple. So I do hope other members of the public take the time to review it.
But you're giving us a nefarious...
And go to the meetings and make public comment.
As they do.
It is their right.
That's right.
They need to be notified of it, they need to have adequate notice. And if they don't appear, you get to say, "They didn't appear." But your obligation is to notify them and make sure, you give everybody a chance to say something about Marble Dale Road, which is gonna cost them a minimum, if you ever bury the utility lines, a million dollars a mile to bury them. It's gonna cost them a lot. This is not just pretty facades. This is expensive, this is costly, and other than the reference to grants, there's no indication how any of this is gonna be paid for. And my, my position is, you need to let the public know this is going on, because, you know, I know you hear it all the time, because I heard it all the time. When was this passed? When were they gonna let us know about this? I never heard about this. Now, some of those people didn't pay a lot of attention, but some people did. And some people never got notice, which raises the other question about notice. I've heard a million times, "Oh, I live within 100 feet of that project. I didn't get my notice through the mail. I don't know if it's 100 feet anymore, or it's 200 feet." I sure hope there are provisions to mail notices to the adjacent and any abutting homeowners so that they have an opportunity to comment. 'Cause I live far away from there, but I get the winds from there, right through my window. So I'm gonna be here to comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Mike Dorgano, 62 Chestnut Street, Tuckahoe. A couple of questions and points. One point is from a standpoint of grants, 'cause I was looking at the thing. I think that, in, in a positive note, with Andrew Stewart Cousins as now the head, we have a Westchester person that can hopefully, we can utilize Shelley and Amy to get some money for Marble Dale, which would be great. I don't think we had that power before, so that's, that's an opportunity regarding the, that thing. Second thing is, the DEC still hasn't given us their information, so I wonder how any of this would get affected once we know from the DEC. So I'm sure there's probably gonna be a provision or something in there that would state, this might be modified depending on what the DEC says back to us for the Southern Peace Site and Northern Peace Site.
Just, just to clarify, this is a document to give a recommendation for not the village taxpayers to spend money on private property along Marble Dale Road, 'cause the village taxpayers do own nothing other than the DPW yard. This is a document that will be used for any new development that's gonna be coming online. So if somebody were to buy half of Marble Dale Road, because they believe this is such a desirable community, this document would be a document that the planning board would point to and say, "You know what? This was something that was vetted out by the planning board back in 2018, the village board." And they'll be able to point to the fact that, okay, Mr. and Mrs. Developer, if you're gonna go ahead and redevelop half of Marble Dale Road, we strongly suggest that you bury the power lines at your expense. So these are not expenses that the village taxpayers are gonna have, and that's not the purpose of the document. It's to provide some degree of understanding for a new developer who may or may, well, who would potentially come in, before they even come in, to look at this, or they may just say, "You know what? I don't care what the document says, it's non-binding, I'm just gonna take my chance at the planning board level and see if I can go ahead and, and push my project through." So, it's for recommendation purposes and it's, like I said, it's something that the planning board will use this document, and we've actually had the chair of the planning board sit in on all the meetings that we had with BJEF Planning, Noah Levine, to go ahead and make these recommendations. So, it's definitely nothing that we, you know, a private developer may wish to go ahead and apply for grants in some form or fashion, but I wouldn't wanna use our grant chip for somebody who's gonna develop their own private property. I mean, it's, you know, I'd rather, you know, use our grant opportunity, go ahead and redevelop one of our parks, or maybe put in new sidewalks around village property, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Another question regarding water flow there. You know, in the last month, well, not month, but whatever, it was in September, so we had two really bad floods on that street, and part of it, I know, probably the drains got clogged. But when it was raining, I was actually there and I watched it become a river. And I don't know how much the guidelines are gonna help with that for structures that are already there, so it'll be interesting to see. That's where a grant might make sense, for us to get some money from the state to try to fix that. I know it's tough, because the pavement doesn't absorb the water and it flows right down, they had, you know, they had to close it off by Cube Smart, because, you know, it was, so that's a consideration. And the guidelines, the thing I like about the guidelines too, is that if they, if they are followed, the water hopefully will go down more, because it's part of the development. It's not about, let's let the runoff go onto the street and become a river, come on Marble Dale River. So I think that's an interesting...
It's interesting you bring it up too, because years ago, back before we built the new office down at the DPW yard, the flooding issues there were horrendous. I mean, what you saw, we used to have just on a moderate rainfall. So when we built the garage, we put in a system there, it's a, Frank knows the term, it's a hydro, something around a water separator, and it cleans all the contaminants. We, you know, we actually made some improvements to address flooding in our end of Marble, our end meeting where the Main Street Park is. So, we really haven't had any floods, but we had two back-to-back there. You know, I watched, the guys were out there at waiters. So, you know, I was kinda surprised that we had such an issue there. And it wasn't just there, we actually had some severe flooding in a couple of other pockets that we've never had. It was actually on Main Street and Washington, I think, or Washington or Jefferson. And, but then again, we had, we didn't have flooding in areas that I've actually been in people's basements and helping them pump water out. So, a little strange, I really, you know, down on Yonkers Avenue, down at the end of Yonkers Avenue, Garrett, I mean, we, we'd be out there entering moderate rainfalls helping out poor Mrs. Salano, she's gone now, in her basement, it was just... So, anyway, yeah, we, we've actually addressed a lot of the flooding issues, but those last two storms were, I think it was just too much rain in too short a period of time.
Oh yeah, and the weather's monkey now. And one last thing, I know there's something about, this is about plants, getting back to the environmental committee for this. I think you guys probably know this, and, I know this, that in, I think it was in September, the county said they were going to use native plants for their, their own property. And native plants are better for the environment, they're more adaptable. So I, I don't know if that was in there, 'cause I read it kinda quickly today, but going forward, I think maybe as part, and when you have the public hearing, I'm gonna recommend that, that maybe native plants be a guideline that is added to this, because native plants are adaptable, they can take the stresses of our environment here, and they actually are better for bees and birds and whatnot, because they're not, so it's just, I'm...
It's a good suggestion.
Yeah, I'm just gonna bring it up now and...
I don't, I don't know, I don't remember seeing it in there, it might be in there, but if it's not, it's a very good suggestion.
Yeah, I just was bringing it up, and I'll talk about it with Frank, but I think it makes a lot of sense. It doesn't really add to the cost, but I think it's better for, if you're gonna do the lead thing, it's, it's something to consider.
Understood.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe in those guidelines, they're all recommendations for the type of plants.
Native plants?
Yeah.
I don't know if, I'm not gonna say they're native plants, but I know there was, there were suggestions put forth.
All right, that's gonna bring us to our resolutions, and tonight we have resolution number one, which is authorizing an appointment of an automotive mechanic as outlined on the appointment letter dated November 2, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And this is actually not an addition to the department, it is a replacement. We had one person retired and our mechanic moved up in the ranks, so we're replacing actually our mechanic.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing the designation of the Village Board of Trustees as lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act for the adoption of the Marble Dale Road Design Guidelines as an amendment to the Village of Tuckahoe Comprehensive Plan. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
In favor. And resolution number three is authorizing the referral of the Marble Dale Road Design Guidelines to the planning board for report and recommendation and setting a public hearing to consider adopting the guidelines as amendment to the comprehensive plan for January 7, 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing an acknowledgement of the fiscal year ending 2018 justice court audit. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number five is authorizing a stipulation of agreement with local 456 International Brotherhood of Teamsters in relation to sick leave accumulation and buyout. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number six is authorizing the repurposing of $10,000 of capital funds from the Tuckahoe Community Center Program Study to the Tuckahoe Community Center Floor Replacement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And we're actually gonna have a resolution probably next month, because we're getting a shared contribution from the General Rosa Pope Foundation. We wanna thank them to replace that carpeting that's in the floor of the community center.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
In favor. Resolution number seven is approving vouchers in the amount of $454,681.76. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. That brings us to any discussion items amongst our board members? We could talk about anything in our reports too. So now we're gonna move to our departmental reports of the board, and tonight, we're gonna start with our Lieutenant Andy Sieromick, 'cause I don't see the chief here tonight.
Good evening Mayor, Board of Trustees. I don't know if you guys wanna take a pause, but the, the house has technical difficulties with the screen.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. All right. So let's go ahead and take a pause while we reboot our computers. Thank you. All right, we're back live, live it's Saturday night, but it's really Wednesday night. Yes?
So good evening. Chief Costanzo's under the weather a little bit tonight, so I'm gonna step in. We just wanted to, to mention a couple events that we, that we've been participating in over the last month. On October 20th, the Police Department, along with the friends and family of the Norman family, former Chief Henry Norman, we unveiled a plaque at the Main Street Park to pay tribute to Chief Norman's legacy. It was, it was a nice event, it was well-attended, and it's, it's a good space there for, for people of the community to, to come recognize some of our past history. And I wanted to especially thank Chief Costanzo, members of the PBA, and, and Trustee Greg Luise, who helped coordinate.
Thank you.
And lead this, lead this nice tribute. And lead this, lead this nice tribute. On October 25th, I was joined with Mayor Eklund. The Village of Tuckahoe won the Gold Award for the AAA's Northeast Community Traffic Safety Awards Program. It's an initiative to reduce accidents through enforcement, and also data collection and surveys. We also got a special mention for having 44 consecutive years of not having a pedestrian fatality. So let's not jinx that, but we're number two, only next to Irvington, so we're, we're on the top of the charts, and it just goes to show the work of the, and the efforts of the men and women of the department who are out there enforcing our roads and keeping everything safe. So it was a nice tribute. Lastly, we have the Thanksgiving holidays upon us, we just wanted to make sure that our roads are staying safe. We've beefed up patrol a little bit during the Thanksgiving weekend to make sure that everyone's adhering to the rules of the road, and that we all have a safe holiday. So we will be out there, and that's really it, we hope everyone has a nice holiday.
Good. Thank you. And you, too. Thank you.
You also.
Frank? Frank DiMarco, or Superintendent of Public Works?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm just going to touch on a couple of things. I also want to welcome our new mechanic, Thomas Scarborough, who'll be starting the 19th of November, be a great asset to the village, he's a young, energetic individual. For those that don't know, my previous mechanic, Joe Tavololo, was hired as our new general foreman in, in the DPW yard. So that position became open, and applicants came in, we did some interviews, and, and Thomas Scarborough seems to be the most qualified individual. He graduated from Saunders Trade School in Yonkers, and went on to Lincoln's Tech as a heavy, heavy truck mechanic slash diesel mechanic, and that's out of Connecticut. So we're looking forward to having him aboard. I also want to touch on the Condisson upgrade on Winter Hill, Fulling, Henry. We've completed the paving, the final paving and restoration on Fulling and Henry, and the reason Winter Hill is taking so long is because during this gas line upgrade, they've damaged some of our sewer lines, our main sewer lines on Winter Hill. So I met with Condisson and their representatives, and Danella Construction, who was the actual contractor on the job, and they're going to look, they're moving forward in just repairing the one main section that is capable of collapsing at any time. So that's a major repair that I feel necessary, and that needs to be done ASAP, so we're hoping to get that done next week. Once that's all completed and our roads are paved, they're also going to pay, pay to also have our lines relined. Our sewer lines are going to be lined, and we have about 550 lineal feet of new relined pipes that they're going to be responsible for.
That's excellent, because that's expensive.
Yeah.
That's wonderful.
It really is. So after this major repair, I'm looking to get the road paved and completed during the season before it starts getting cold and we start plowing, and that's not when I want to do my pavement. With that said, that's really all I have.
Leaves are getting picked up, I see the vacuums are out there picking up leaves, and.
We are picking up leaves.
Mm-hmm.
And, yeah, one thing I also want to mention, you know, with all the rain we're having, you know, the roads are becoming very slippery, so please be aware. Pile the leaves nicely. Fire hydrants, stay away from fire hydrants, don't pile, pile leaves around fire hydrants. Obviously, you don't park on leaves, because the catalytic converter gets hot and possible to start major fires that way, it could be very dangerous. But other than that, we're, we're tagging along. You know, again, there's no schedule with these leaf pickups, you know, we start in one location, and we, we take the whole village, and we loop around, and there's no set timeframe for any particular road, so be patient, we will get there.
Is there an end date? Isn't normally December 1st, or 15th, or something?
It's usually December 15th. We carry it over for another week or so, just to make sure we get all the leaves, and we don't want people bagging them, this is such an inconvenience. It's so much easier for us to come by and just vacuum.
Right, okay.
But I try not to tell anybody that.
No, I know that, yeah, sorry.
Just so you know.
Just to, okay, sorry about that. Thank you, Frank.
Okay.
Camille, anything tonight? Okay, Gary?
Nothing on my end.
All right, David?
Very quickly, residential parking permits.
Mm-hmm, oh, that's right.
Important to a lot of residents, they expire at the end of the month, they can be renewed in the clerk's office. Jackie will be happy to help you out.
And free of charge, right?
Free of charge. Make sure you have your current registrations, there's the form you need to fill out there, but if you have any questions, please give her a call, or you can email all that documentation to her, and we can send those out, so.
Perfect, excellent, thank you. All right, miscellaneous business, Winter Fest is going to be held in Depot Square on December 1st and 2nd. Our next Village Board meeting will be on December 10th, and that's going to bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports, and we are going to start with our Deputy Mayor, Tom Giordano.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. Just a few announcements this evening, as Ms. Caliano referred, there will be no Planning Board meeting this month. Next week's planning, next month's Planning Board meeting will be on December 18th at 7:30 PM, which will be the final meeting of the year, and the work session will be on December 4th at 7:00 PM. The final zoning board meeting of the year will be on December 12th, work session at 6:30 PM, followed by the December 12th meeting at 7:30 PM. Let's see, on December 5th, in Depot Square, there will be the menorah lighting that will be presided over by Rabbi Deitch at 6:00 PM. And in, and before that, this coming Sunday, as most of you know, is Veterans Day, and this year, the Eastchester Tuckahoe Veteran Ceremony Committee will be, has, has planned a memorial service at 11:11, at 11:00 AM, at the Parkway Oval, as is, as is traditional. And this year marks the 100th year anniversary of Armistice Day, which as most of you know is the, the day that the, to commemorate the cessation of hostilities on the Western Front following World War I. So a good time to go and remember and acknowledge those who, who gave their service and sacrifice for our country. That's all, I'd like to wish all of our community a...
Sir Giordano, one, one thing that, there is a zoning board meeting next week.
Is there?
There is, yeah, that wasn't canceled, the Planning Board was canceled this month.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But the zoning board's on through the 14th, very, very light agenda.
You're right, you're right.
I think there's one thing on the agenda, I just want to make sure.
Thanks. Thank you, thanks, Gary. Apologies. And I just wanted to wish all of our community a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. Trustee Luizy?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be brief tonight, on behalf of Jennifer, Jennifer Vitremile, she would just like the community to know that the bazaar that was held on October 30, on October 13th was a success, and on behalf of the Tuckahoe seniors, I would also like to thank the generosity of the, so many merchants that donated prizes for the raffle drawing. And the seniors are also holding a Thanksgiving food drive for Ecap, so they are accepting donation, donations of non-perishable food items at the Father Father Hall when they are in session, which is on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 10 until 2. So please, if you can, and want to help the people in the community, drop off those food items at Father Father Hall, and like my colleague, Mr. Giordano, I also wish the residents of this community a happy and blessed Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Handino?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I report on the library activities, I received a call from lovely Billups this evening, resident, longtime resident of Tuckahoe. She wanted me to relay her gratitude for those that wished Max Pierce, her grandson, who has been accepted to play with the Harlem Globetrotters. She said she wanted to, for me to express her gratitude to those who sent well wishes, cards, and wished him well. He's, he's off, and he's with the Harlem Globetrotters already. She also wanted me to let people know that he will not be at the County Center Event with the Harlem Globetrotters, he's going to be at Madison Square Garden on November 23rd, and at the Barclays Center in Brooklyn on November 25th. There will be buses leaving out of Ecap for those events, so if anyone is interested and would like to go and support Max, you can call the Ecap for more information. Also, the Friends, as the mayor mentioned, we were able to donate $3,500 from the, the community fund to the Friends of, to the library, and the Friends of the Tuckahoe Library Board also expressed their gratitude when I presented the check to them, so they wanted me to relay that to everyone. The library, as you guys know, has a very robust programs, so I ask that you go onto the library website and look for events that might interest you, just a couple of events that are going on. They've been doing a lot of cooking classes, we have a couple more, you know, one in November, on November 15th at 3:30, we're going to have a kitchenette, she's going to be teaching Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving soup, and some scrumptious pumpkin waffles, if you like pumpkin. And also on December 5th, there will be an author, the author of Instant Indian, Indian Cooking, coming to, to do some, some book signing and some, some classes. We also have Tuckahoe Winter Fest with a performance by the Tuckahoe High School Jazz Band at the community center that is being sponsored by Friends of the Library. So that's on Saturday, December 1st at 2:00 PM, so come out and see the high school jazz band. And then there are some book, books that the book club will be hosting, they'll be discussing The Dry, which is a New York Times bestseller by Jane Harper, on Wednesday, November 14th at 6:30, and holiday books and tea. They're going to be talking about the book Little Woman on Saturday, December 8th at 11:30 AM. So go onto the library website and just look up, see if there's some events that you might be able to participate in. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Trustee Lang?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Erin for another wonderful Bronx River cleanup this weekend. She does a lot of hard work with that, and we appreciate, I appreciate her teaching my boys how important that stuff is, so thank you to Erin. In addition to, I want to just talk about the Winter Fest. John Galuzzi can't be here tonight, and he lost his voice, so I'd like to just go over the Winter Fest. So Winter Fest is going to be Saturday, December 1st, from 5 to 8:00 PM. You can meet Santa, they'll be caroling by the Asbury Summer Theater. Our tree lighting ceremony will take place at 6:00 PM. The following day on Sunday, the 2nd, from noon to 5:00, we'll have holiday music by Alive and Kicking, also Joshua Crumpton, and La Piazza di Carolina, pardon me, if I messed that one up, presents the Children's Italian Christmas Choir. There'll also be pictures with Santa from 12 to 4:00, inside the Pope Building, petting zoo from 12 to 4:00, hay rides, and that's a great time, you should all come out. And also, I just wanted to, yes, I just wanted to talk about, you know, Veterans Day approaching. I want to talk about this shipwreck that was recently discovered. So back in March, on St. Patty's Day, the USS Juno was, was discovered. The Juno was struck twice by Japanese torpedoes and sunk on November 13th, 1942. On that day, 687 men were lost, one being Eastchester's own Edward Heinzinger, a graduate, a graduate of Eastchester High School, he enjoyed boxing, and he was even a three-time champ. Edward enlisted in the Navy after the attack on Pearl Harbor, and, I'm sorry, and was assigned to the Juno, gee whiz, almost 50. Pardon me. He was assigned to the Juno in August of 1942. The Juno, the Juno, the Juno participated in many, in many battles before that fateful November Day. Eddie was only 21 when he lost his life, so, you know, we want to keep him in our thoughts. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, yep, very, very important to people to remember Veterans Day, 11:11, 11:11, I mean, can't forget that. My report will be brief, I just want to actually congratulate all the individuals who were either elected or re-elected yesterday, and with that, I just want to wish everyone in our community a very happy Thanksgiving. And that's going to bring us to our second opportunity to address the board on anything under the sun. Mr. Frashanti, yes?
Jerry Frashanti, Fall Concert Drive, Tuckahoe, New York. A while ago, I complained about the people leaving their trash and recycling items on the curb way ahead of time. Well, I'm happy to report that, I guess they saw me on TV, because I noticed lately there haven't been much of that stuff on, on this road, and I'm very happy that they appreciate what it does to their, their homes. I'd like to congratulate the Police Department for their traffic control on the intersection of the, by the bridge, where, where they repaved that, I think on Columbus Day, if I'm not mistaken. They did a terrific job in monitoring the traffic, and though some people did complain, why on a holiday? Well, if they looked, they would have saw that there were no cars in the parking lots, which would have meant double the traffic, but I understand that, that it went very well. In fact, I passed that intersection twice that day, and I had no problems getting, getting through. It was a little wait, but as I stated, the traffic control was terrific. And also, it's, it's not a complaint, but I noticed that when they redid the lining, they put a line for the stop line before the crosswalk on Lake Avenue by the old Revlon Building. Now, that stop line used to be way back, which I think it should be, either that or a sign put up stating, "Stop here on red," because trucks and the buses making a right-hand turn from the bridge going to the constantly, or Parkway Oval, with a car right by the stoplight is very, very hard. I've seen traffic back up, in fact, one car had to basically pass the light so that the traffic can go flow, can go quickly. So I would like to see that taken care of, if possible. And I also stated once before that the two parking spaces on that bridge, I think should be eliminated, because that would really help the right hand turn from the other way. I know it's, it's, it's an inconvenience maybe for the, the merchants there, but that's only two parking spaces, and I'm sure that the village can absorb the, the loss of the revenue from those, just those, those two meters. And again, I'd like to thank everybody, and hope they all have a happy and, and healthy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. Yes, Lieutenant Sermolnick, we'll take a look at that stop bar and make sure that it's in compliance, and it's where it's supposed to be. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Albert Stern, Westview Avenue. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
I don't know if that's, okay. Two months ago, at board meeting, the mayor, you agreed to bring our tax rebate negotiator, I believe his name is Aldo, to come to a meeting, come to this meeting and explain the process of certuraries, and, because there's been so much confusion over the process, and I wondered if the date has been set yet.
We're actually, he's not going to come to a Village Board meeting, but we spoke to him about coming to a work session, and we were certainly going to let you be aware of that work session. So there, all our work sessions, of course, are open to the public, so you would have an opportunity to go ahead and ask him any questions. And I, I think, I forgot what, was it the December meeting? I think December work session, so we're going to let you know.
Okay, I, I would suggest that he come here, because, well, you'll, after I finish speaking, maybe you get a good understanding why he probably should come here and not do it at a smaller session. At the same board meeting, Trustee Handino said that she thought it would be a good idea for the trustees to discuss the idea of doing a village property tax revaluation. My question is, have you had that discussion, and what were the results of that discussion?
Most likely have that discussion when we're in meeting with Aldo at that time.
You, you haven't had the discussion yet? What I want to talk about is these large tax rebates or certuraries. They really do hurt our homeowners, because it's generally, they're generally not cost-effective for the average homeowner to go through the process. Developers and co-ops, on the other hand, had great, have greater financial incentives to hire top-flight attorneys, needed to secure hundreds of thousands of dollars in rebates every year. Therefore, the average homeowner is really hurt, as the village continues to average over $350,000 annually, given to corp, primarily corporations and developers. Since 2011, through tonight, Tuckahoe's given rebates, or tax certuraries, of approximately $2.7 million. Let's be very clear about this, no other nearby village has handed out even close to this kind of money. Tuckahoe has done this in the last eight years, yet nothing- Tuckahoe has done this in the last eight years, yet nothing has been done about it. Two months ago, the mayor and trustee Louisi mentioned that a revaluation would cost upwards of $2 million. For months now, they have, both of you have consistently mentioned that number, one and a half to $2 million. Because of that high number, according to you, nothing has been done about having a revaluation. And you've talked about possibly going to the town or the county or the state. But Tuckahoe did not want to do that. So I became curious about where these numbers came from, the $2 million. Mr. Louisi mentioned that Mary Marvin, the Bronxville mayor, stated that number. So that number seemed, again, extraordinarily high to me. So I decided to do some independent research. I asked the village administrator of Bronxville and the Scarsdale assessor through different emails I sent them, what their actual costs were for their respective property tax revaluations. And I looked at their websites, which by the way, contain loads of information about their own tax revaluations. The results were very surprising. For Bronxville, a village about the size of Tuckahoe, their administrator, Mr. Palmer, stated on their website that their revaluation cost was $374,000. It was done by a company called J.R. Ryan. In addition, there were approximately $150,000 in additional costs for a consultant and legal counsel, total of about $525,000. Since the revaluation was done 10 years ago, I generously increased these numbers by 50%, which gives $800,000. Still nowhere near that $2 million estimate. For Scarsdale, a village three times the population of Tuckahoe, I contacted the village assessor, Ms. Albanezy, I guess her name is. She was quite helpful and stated that their revaluation cost about $1.4 million. That was done in 2014. So you could say, possibly this could run as high as, let's say, $1.7 million today. But then again, if you reduce the number by the difference in population, the cost would then be 575,000, a third of what their cost was because of the population difference. In addition, there was a one-time charge of $250,000 to update the property rolls in 2016. That would make the current cost very close to the $800,000 number for Bronxville. Again, a number far different from your estimate and much in line with the Bronxville, what Bronxville paid. So if these revaluation charges were applied to Tuckahoe, we would have saved our taxpayers approximately $350,000 every year or an annual return of 45% on the investment. Certainly a great return, a fabulous return, actually. And had this been done, we would not now be feeding rich developers like the hotel developer, Bill Weinberg, who just happened two months ago to be given $125,000 for his hotel property, even as it indeed was appreciating value as the property was developed. So with all this information, I ask, I would like to ask the mayor, why is your estimate for the property revaluation been so much higher than the actual results for Bronxville and Scarsdale?
Well, you're, first of all, you're stating numbers that I'm not necessarily in agreement with. So we're going to start off right there. I talk to Mary, Mayor Marvin quite often. I know that her cost for the revale was substantially higher than that. I know that when Al Gata, who was the former assessor for Scarsdale, who I served on a board with at the time that that was ongoing, it was extraordinarily high. But I want to take a moment here because you're going to, certainly you will come to our work session and talk to Aldo. But I think it's important because month after month, you come and you talk about these big tax rebates that are going to big greedy corporations. So I want, I think it's very important that the public understands something. First of all, I'm going to use an example of your property last month. We wrote you a check and you and the other residents in your building a check for, I think it was about $100,000. Am I right? It was $90,000. Okay. So you're not a corporation, you're, you're an association.
Gentry is a corporation.
Okay, good. So you're, the property that you reside in received $90,000. So why did you get $90,000? Because you hired an attorney, rightfully so, who challenged the amount of real estate taxes that you have paid over the last period of years. I'm not sure how many years that your tax certiori filing was for. So let's go back to the reason why anybody would settle. First of all, why did you hire an attorney to go ahead and file that claim? Because you and your attorney felt that you had paid too much in property taxes. So when you made that application, the tax assessor and the tax assessor and the village's defense attorney, who was Aldo, that's what he is, he's a tax defense attorney, they all negotiate a settlement. The reality is, you did pay too much in property taxes. And that's why you got a $90,000 refund check last month. So as much as it pains me, and it's always pained me, to go ahead and have to refund, not rebate, not grant, these are tax refunds. A certiori filing results in a tax refund of overpayment because you overpaid your property taxes. And the village's defense attorney agreed, along with your attorney, agreed with the village's defense attorney in that you did overpay in your property taxes. Hence, you got a $90,000 refund because you overpaid your property taxes for a period of year. So that scenario that I just laid out applies to every tax certiori refund that the village approves. So let's say that when you filed your lawsuit, your tax certiori challenge, if the village's defense attorney were to take the position and got direction from the mayor and this board saying, you know what, we don't, we totally disagree with Mr. Stern and Ms. Caliano and even Al Myra lives in the building too. So I'm not picking on you specifically, I know it sounds like that, because you've been picking on us. So.
I've not been picking on you. I'm just stating facts.
All right.
And you're not answering my question.
All right. So I'm going to finish, let me finish.
You have not answered my question yet, Mr. Mayor.
Where I'm going with this is that the reality is that you were entitled to that refund because you overpaid your property taxes for a period of time. It's up to the village to hire the best defense we can to negotiate a settlement. When you filed your tax certiori challenge, which is basically, it's a filing protesting how much money you paid in your taxes, we're not just going to go ahead and accept that and say, well, jeez, you know, I guess you paid too much, so we need to go ahead and give you all this money back. That's why the village hires a tax certiori defense firm, which is Aldo, who you'll meet, and he goes ahead and he negotiates a settlement with you and your organization. So you agreed to that settlement, you accepted the $90,000 tax refund, we are satisfied with it, you're obviously satisfied with it. That's the way it works. So your question is, why doesn't the village go ahead and spend the money to go ahead and do a revale in the village of Tuckahoe? I've said this for 15 years, all the years that I've been on this board. The cost is phenomenal, okay? But aside from the cost, let's say the village, let's say somebody came in here and just wrote a check for it. At the end of the day, unless the town of Eastchester and the village of Tuckahoe, who shares the same assessor, we have two different assessment roles, unless we're on the same, if we're tracking along the same line, because we are paying town taxes, we as Tuckahoe residents are paying village taxes. So it's always been my opinion, my feeling, and I'm just one person, that if the town and the village had the same assess role, we actually have two different assess roles, if we shared the same, and if there was then a revale just on a townwide basis, or even better, if it were on a county-wide basis, because we're all paying county taxes too, that's where it should come from. So I believe firmly that it should start from the top. And I want to say Senator Latimer, I was, County Executive Latimer feels the same way. He also feels that there should be a revale, preferably on a county-wide level. Now, is the county going to go ahead and do a revale for all these municipalities within the county of Westchester? We'll have to wait and see.
All right. Well, you still didn't answer my question.
Okay.
My question was simply, what have you done besides talked to Mary Marvin? And how have you gotten this $2 million figure? The $2 million figure does not match with Scarsdale, does not match with Bronxville, does not match. So have you hired a, have you gone to a consultant to find out how much the actual costs were? Or did you just simply talk to another politician or someone? In other words, have you, you got any firm facts on how much the revaluation would cost? Have you done that work? That's my question.
We have done, myself, I'll speak for myself, I've done informal questioning of other municipalities. I sit on the executive board of the Westchester Municipal Officers Association. So I sit in a room with every mayor and supervisor in the county of Westchester on a monthly basis. And this is what we discuss. We discuss these items, so.
You know, okay, I will go beyond that. But at this point, I suggest you get a concrete number and don't find out from someone else what they told you. But go to like the people that consulted with Bronxville and find out what the cost would actually be. Why would Bronxville cost be less than 50% of what your number is? I don't know. But you haven't answered that question. Okay, now let me just finish this. For the average homeowner, and we're talking about average homeowner, I'm not talking about the Gentry as a co-op where there are 180 units. I'm talking about Mr. and Mrs. Doe, who owns a $500,000, $800,000 home here. He's lost about $1,500 in my estimation by these, by these tax certuraries. For the average homeowner, the 2.7 million that you've paid out since 2011, it's cost over $800. Now, for a person who has done an average home like the co-op at Gentry, it could be easily $1,500 that these tax certuraries have cost them. Yes, you're right. The Gentry benefits, the large co-ops, the developers like Mr. Weinberg, they all are taking the average homeowner's money because they're not going to go and get, please let me finish.
But do you know what occurs here the third Thursday of February?
The tax certuraries go to them, it doesn't go to the homeowner, the average homeowner.
But what happens in this room the third Thursday of February every year? What happens right here, right at this desk? All those homeowners that you're talking about, they come here, they have the opportunity to come here and challenge, without having to hire an attorney, they can challenge their tax, the taxes they pay. They can file a protest against how much they pay, just like you did. And the assessor and the assessment review board, they analyze it, same way, it's just on a smaller scale, so.
Well, that would be a good suggestion. That might motivate.
That's been going on for 100 years.
That might motivate you to get a revale.
Actually, Danny sat on that board.
That might motivate you to get a real revaluation if like 100 or 200 homeowners came and did a tax certiori and tried to get their part of the pie, like the Gentry or like Bill Weinberg or some of these other people who can hire high-priced lawyers and can wait for years for this. The average owner, let's say, gets $1,000. What's the point of getting a lawyer? You might get a lawyer to get $1,000.
Look, the lawyers advertise on television, the lawyers take, actually Rich O'Donnell, the former tax assessor, is one of the premier tax certiori attorneys for residents in our community. And I get the mailing every, you know, every six months. They take a third. That's, so they're not paying.
Just a suggestion here.
Sure.
That when your trustees get together, you figure out how to find out a consultant, bring a consultant in and find out exactly, concretely, how much the revaluation will cost. And at that point, we can talk about real numbers rather than talk about what someone told you three years ago and how much their revaluation would cost. I have two concrete examples here. And they're on their website, too. So you can actually look at, find out how much they charge. And no one was close to $2 million. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If we have nobody else, or Mike, did you want to, yes, Mr. Giordano?
I'm Giordano. I just wanted to say that the Harvest Fest was fantastic at the Depot Square that the Chamber did. They've done a really good job in a short time. It wasn't as packed as the summer one, but the activity at the booths was a lot better and the vendors were very happy. So what we, I tried, Danny, to get E-CAP a table, but it was, they couldn't, like you said, they couldn't staff it. So for the next one in the summer, I'm going to try to do that in advance and get, because they really should be there. Also, the Chamber and I are going to meet with E-CAP to discuss an internship program with Chamber members, which would be really cool.
Very good.
That'd be a really cool thing. And finally, I wanted to thank the police here. I know it doesn't get settled up, but I want to say it. Every time I've had any interaction with a Tuckahoe police officer, it's been extremely pleasant, even when I've not been correct. So I just want to thank them for doing that. I really appreciate that and it stands out, needs to be mentioned.
They do a stellar job. Thank you. All right. With there being no other business tonight, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. This meeting is now adjourned. Till next time, have a very good evening and a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday.
And happy Veterans Day.
And Veterans Day.